Good evening, and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach's special city commission meeting today, Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 5:33 PM. I will lead the commission and the meeting in invocation, but everyone, please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, let us gather here in friendship. A true friend is one that you don't always agree with, but that you can agree to disagree. We here are, as the city commission, are deciding for the next fiscal year. And as we do such, we make sure that we listen to all of our thoughts, all of our community members, all of our businesses, because we are not making decisions for ourselves, but we are making decisions for the City of Boynton Beach, Palm Beach County, the State of Florida, and the United States of America. So with that being said, in your name, we pray, amen. Now, I'll lead for the pledge of allegiance. May I have a flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tyson Serga.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow Hay.
We got a thumbs up.
Present?
Yes.
Got a thumbs up, okay. And Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
If I may do my intro real quick, just to give individuals an opportunity to participate. Hello and welcome. My name is John McNally, and I'll be providing assistance to the mayor and the elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first ways by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the go-to webinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the go-to webinar interface and clicking on the raise hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I'll now turn control back over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you so much, John. Now, we're up to agenda approval and the additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. With the commission's permission, I've received a lot of emails regarding the 5G wireless that is up and coming. And I wanted to know if we could get a brief announcement after we do the fire assessment.
Mayor?
Yes.
Who would the announcement be from?
I would hopefully from someone from our building department or city manager.
I'd be interested in hearing that as well, if staff is prepared.
I can see if Mike Rump would be available. I don't have any information that I'd be able to provide at this point. I'll see if Mike Rump does.
All right. And so we'll see if we have any comments. And then Commissioner Hay, are you able to, I know you can give a thumbs up, but are you able to call in because we are not able to hear you as it currently states? So Lori, is it possible that he can use your microphone as the speaker? You're muted as well. As much as that, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Penzerga to allow for the discussion, we have not received a second to approve the agenda.
Mayor, just for clarification, you're just asking to add a discussion about the 5G onto the agenda?
Correct. There is a lot of information that was sent to me this past week, and whatever information we can give to the public today, rather than the following week, I think they'd like to know.
Sure, I'm fine with that second.
Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 1B, conduct first public budget hearing for fiscal year 2020, 2021, propose village tentative annual operating budget. Do we have a presentation for this item?
Mayor Grant?
Yeah, we have a presentation. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services.
Anthony Davidson, Budget Manager.
Our budget approval schedule for this year is tonight's first public budget hearing to adopt the tentative budget and the final fire assessment rate resolution, and in addition, Tuesday, September 22nd, to adopt the second public budget hearing for the final mileage rate and final budget. Next slide, please. The purpose of our budget hearings tonight and on the 22nd are to review and discuss the FY 2020 and 2021 tentative operating and capital budgets with the commission, provide an opportunity for comments from the public, adopt a proposed village rate and tentative budget, and adopt a preliminary rate resolution for the fire assessment. Some of the budget revisions since the July workshop, general fund received an increase of about $7,662, general government CIP increased $28,697, and golf fund increased by $87,776. Next slide, please. Overall, these are the significant changes from the workshop that you saw in July to current. Our ad valorem taxes, we received a little bit of an increase, so you're seeing an increase of $120,000. We're projecting a little bit of an increase in Florida power and light for $150,000. We did get our municipal revenue sharing, our state shared revenue, we saw a decrease of $294,880. Sales taxes down $861,383. We saw a decrease in abandoned property registration and fines of about $12,000, and rental of city facilities saw a decrease of $25,000. The most significant change you'll see now, we are proposing a use of fund balance in the amount of $931,262. So that brings your overall fund balance for, or your overall general fund budget to Your general government CIP saw an increase of $28,697 for the commission-approved CAD police software. So we're bringing it from $2,846,527 to $2,875,224. Golf funds, we did a reorganization for some of our greenskeepers, so their overall budget went from $1,806,404 to $1,894,180. Next slide, please. Your overall funding sources for your overall budget, $226.3 million. Water and sewer make up 23.1% of that, or $52.2 million. Property taxes are $41.2 million, or 18.2%. Your capital sources are $30.2 million, or 13.3%. And then the rest of your funds. Next slide, please. On your proposed expenditures, also the same as your revenues, is $226.3 million. General fund is $99.2 million, or 43.8% of that. Utility is $52.2 million, or 23.1%. Your capital is general, and utility is $30.2 million, or 13.3%. Next slide, please. Your overall expenditure summary from your last year's general fund to our proposed budget for this year, we're seeing an increase of $2.7 million in the general fund, a decrease of your overall enterprise funds of, oh, I'm sorry, decrease of your golf course fund of about $305,000, increase in water and sewer point for $1.2 million, and an increase in solid waste for $234,000. Your internal service funds as a whole went from $16,228,000 to $16,455,000. Next slide, please. Our special revenue funds, which include your traffic safety funds, your local option gas tax, public art, your recreation, community improvements, and cemetery, went from $4.7 million to $4.3 million for last year to this year or coming year. Your capital improvement projects, which includes your park and recreation, your general government CIP, your general government surtax and utility, overall from last year, budget of $60 million, but cut in half to about $30 million. And your debt service funds went from $10,200,000 to $10,277,000. So your overall proposed from last year of $252 million is now $226 million. Next slide, please. This is the difference in your proposed mileage rate versus your rollback rate. Your proposed mileage rate right now is $7.9 million. The state rollback rate would be $7.4911 mils, or a 5.46% increase. Your budget deficit, should you choose to go back to the rollback rate, would be $2,115,049 and $49, sorry. Next slide, please. Again, we're proposing no increase from your mileage rate from last year to this year, so maintaining the 7.9 mileage rate. The actual tax increase is 5.46%, which we have some examples on the next few slides which kind of demonstrate some of that. Next slide, please. So on your residential property, the average home sees about a 2.3% change, even with the maintaining the 7.9 mileage rate. Annual property tax last year on a $50,000 assessed home would see about a $17 a month change, basically. Next slide, please. On your commercial property, they're actually experiencing about a 6.8% increase. So on an assessed commercial property of $50,000 for 2020, they would see about a $422 increase or $35 a month increase. Next slide, please. And that's it for my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mara. Is there any, first, I'll open it up to the public to see if they have any questions or comments regarding the budget for the upcoming year. Your choice.
Susan Oier, 140 Southeast 27th Way. My question is, is it doesn't break down the pensions on the budget? Can we know what the breakdown is for the pensions, please? Thank you.
So Mara, I don't know if you have that answer off the top of your head, but is that something you can bring back at the next meeting on the 22nd?
Absolutely. I can give you a breakdown of what the pension costs are.
Okay. Can you speak?
I didn't want to talk about this.
Talk about whatever you'd like. It's the budget hearings. It's everything has to do with the budget.
No, I don't have to do with the budget.
Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brenna Armstrong. My address is 208 Northeast 10th Avenue, Boynton Beach. I have a question about the library. My question is, why aren't, why in this pandemic that the children are not allowed to come without their parents if they're 14, 15, 16 years old?
All right.
I think they should be allowed because they need Wi-Fi. Most families don't have internet. So why they coming here, they just getting a job, so they do need, the parents need to go to work, and the kids need to be with their school sessions.
So I went to the library today, and they said that for the adult section, that the people under the age of 18 are not allowed to be there alone. As for the youth section, they are. Plus, we also have the lobby that is open, both along Ocean Avenue and along our green space. And then we have indoor and outdoors with electrical outlets. So if they're not able to be in the adult part of the library, there are other parts of City Hall that they're able to be.
The youth department is downstairs. That's where they were, it was Axl Lee. They walk from here to go home, but they came to me because I'm closer to where they live at. It was Axl Lee, and it wasn't her, he was doing his work. There was no other reason. She didn't give me no other reason except that they was 14, 15, and 16.
Oh, they're allowed to be in City Hall if they're able to behave themselves.
Of course.
There you go. That's the answer.
Thank you. Is this open public speaking on everything tonight, or just?
This is a city commission meeting, and, you know, the question was regarding the library. So if you have other comments regarding city commission, now would be the time.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
I would like to hear from staff, what are the rules around that? That way, it's clear, and we can, if there needs to be a change to that policy right now to make that allowable for students, then, you know, I know right now isn't the time, but I would like to get some type of report on where we are on that, what the rules are, so we can discuss it maybe during our city commission meeting next week or something.
All right. So.
Thank you. Susan Oier, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Thank you, Mayor Grant, for letting me speak and getting interested in. Some point, I know we're having an upcoming CRA meeting, and there's no discussion on the projects at 115 North Federal. I know I've presented what I think should go there. I know Kim Kelly has come up with a wonderful example, project example as well. So I hope we'll be allowed to discuss these at some point, or at least have some kind of input into what's going to happen at 115 North Federal Highway. My other issue is the cemetery. I brought this up two weeks ago, so this is more than two weeks old. I brought this up at the last commission meeting, nothing has changed. I was over at the cemetery over the weekend. You still have approximately a dozen headstones that are tipped over, moved, disrupted in some way, shape, or form, and this has been a problem for in excess of two weeks. I have to say, the cemetery staff is usually truly outstanding and does such a wonderful job at our cemetery, and now all of a sudden, you know, we've gone more than two weeks with headstones tipped over and lying on their sides and shifted, and there's a big board out there over near one of the DuBois family members, and I'm happy to send pictures to everyone, but I'm wondering how much longer this is going to take to get this fixed. And I understand they may have had to, I don't know, maybe things fell over while they had the big machinery and redoing parts of the cemetery and taking out the road and inputting grass so we can add more bodies, but this has been quite a while now, and I think that's quite disrespectful of so many of our citizens, you know, the original citizens, because this is in the old part of the cemetery. So this is, you know, the families that have been here for decades and decades, and their family members are being dishonored, and how much longer is this going to take? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And so I also see people with their hand raised, so I'm going to start with Tom Warnke and have him, you are unmuted, Tom. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Warnke, 2780 Worcester Road, and is my volume okay?
We can hear you fine, thanks for asking.
Great. I have a quick question. At the May 12th CRA board meeting, the City of Boynton Beach made a detailed proposal to the CRA about having the Boynton Beach Recreation and Parks Department assume management of the historic Women's Club of Boynton Beach. At that meeting, the city provided a detailed proposal to the CRA, which was unanimously approved by the CRA board, to have an inter-local agreement drawn up for approval by the CRA, including the proposed transfer of ownership of the facility from the CRA to the city as recommended by the CRA attorney. The proposal also included additional staff positions for the city. Since almost four months has passed, and since this item is listed as a future agenda item in this evening's CRA agenda, and since the ball is apparently in the city's court, my question is, what is the city's approximate timeline to prepare this inter-local agreement for presentation to the CRA, and are these items included in the budget?
So Steph, can we get an answer to this question? Is in next year's budget, taking over the Women's Club, Women's Historic Club of Boynton as part of the budget, and if so, how much is being spent on that? So I guess.
I don't, what, in the inter-local, any additional costs or personnel that would be added to operate the facility would be addressed in the inter-local. We have not amended our budget until such time that the inter-local is done. It probably within the next 60 days. My staff's been busy getting the cultural center, trying to get it up and running. So there are, there will be costs outlined in there to fund additional positions, and then we would probably have to come back and amend our budget with that revenue coming in to offset those costs.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to get a rough timeline for it.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Luanne Moore.
Hello, my name is Luanne Moore. I live at 133 Buffett Key, and I thank you for adding the 5G to the agenda, and I wonder, is this the proper time for me to speak my case now or then?
If you can do it now, and then if we don't address it at the 5G presentation, we'll have our city commission meeting next week and hopefully get more answers for you.
Okay. Well, I, about a year ago, I had occasion to raise questions about the levels of microwave radiation that we have in the community from our telecommunications equipment. We do have a lot of equipment deployed throughout the community, and I did get an EMF meter, and I do see that some of these levels are quite excessive. And I had occasion to, you know, mitigate some of these exposures that I have to this, and I do find that, you know, there are health effects, specifically with tiredness, depression, confusion, memory, and most frightening of all is that it affects how frequently I was getting sick from flus and viruses. And I looked into this further as a matter of, you know, the controversy over the health effects and so such forth, and I find that, you know, that there are considerations here that we need to look at. And what I did was, I started requesting permits for all these facilities that are going in, and comparing them to the current regulations that, you know, are for these levels of radiation that these facilities are supposed to be emitting. And I had been working with the, you know, on these things, and I have sent you some copies of these issues that I have forwarded to the FCC. You know, and, you know, this is about the welfare of our community. These telecom companies are coming in here, and they're installing as much as they can for profit, and they're, and in doing so, they create a lot of liabilities for the city with the people, with how we're exposed to these, when there are, in fact, you know, regulations about limiting them. And also, they're loading up our towers, you know, and, you know, some of the structural analysis that some of these telecoms do, you know, is questionable. And I've itemized these issues to you in these documents, and, you know, I would like for the city to take a look at our ordinances, to see, you know, what more could be done to set some proper limits for exposure to the public. One of these, very recently, there's been a high-powered antenna installed on a street corner a half mile from my house. I can't find, I can't find proper permitting for it, and if, you know, it is not what was intended for an antenna placed in close proximity to the public.
There's more?
Yes.
Your three minutes are up. I believe that you've given the city staff some direction to answer your questions.
Okay.
And we'll speak about it, and we thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Our next is Drake Garnsey. You have been unmuted, you're currently self-muted, if you'd like to speak. Drake? Garnsey, it says that you're currently self-muted.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my son, my son was supposed to speak, but he cannot be here, so, my name is Kim Kelly, from 529 East Ocean Avenue, Boynton Beach, owner of Hurricane Alley since 1996. As you are quite aware, I have been very busy lately. I have started a petition on change.org/hurricanealley, and over 3,700 people have signed and commented about their desires and wants for downtown Boynton Beach. Right before this meeting, we had to march down Ocean Avenue to City Hall in protest of the developing of the parcel at 115 North Federal Highway for our mixed-use project, and it was amazing to see how many people really care about the city. It was a wonderful turnout. I also want to thank the mayor for joining us and supporting downtown. Our views may be different, but he supports downtown, and that is very important. I have recently emailed all of you an alternative drawing done by Jerkston Designs from Atlanta that believed in this project so much, he did it pro bono. It shows what could possibly be done in this area, and it does not involve unoccupied apartments. I am proposing smaller buildings at three stories with restaurants, shops, and entertainment to make this a destination for people to come to. If you look around you, the multiple buildings in our CRA district that has been built for mixed use has been vacant for years, not filled to capacity, or businesses seem to fail. We need to offer entrepreneurs an affordable and vibrant area to build their businesses for them to succeed, not to fail. We have a chance to make Boynton shine. We have a chance to make Boynton a destination, not just a place to live and work. Please open your minds, ears, and eyes, and listen to what your community is craving, something to do and a place to go, which could include a walking trail, kinetic art, entertainment with possible splash zones, outdoor theaters, over 20 restaurants that could mimic a food truck rally on a second-floor level, and a courtyard with a signature of. Something to do and a place to go, which which could include a walking trail, kinetic art, entertainment with possible splash zones, outdoor theaters, over 20 restaurants that could mimic a food truck rally on a second floor level, and a courtyard with a signature sailfish fountain to showcase our gateway to the sea, and multiple shopping stores, not just businesses, business offices. Several other options to be added is a future train depot with a double-decker restaurant train car and a module station that provides car, bike rental scooters, and a kiosk where you can purchase fishing tickets, book charters, get maps of our downtown and info of what we have to offer, and possibly future events. This could be possible if we don't sell our souls or give away our most valued property. Thank you for your time and consideration. We can only make, we can only make change together. We all need to work together, not separately. So please take this in consideration. Hopefully, we can have a compromise.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, this is Jim Sheriff. I don't know how many other people are scheduled to speak on non-agenda items. But if we could return to the public hearing on the budget first and conclude those two agenda items, and then if you want to reopen public comments for general non-budget issues, I think that would be the preferable way to conclude the agenda.
Yeah, I understand your comments. You know, my feeling is that everything has to do with the budget because the city doesn't run without that budget. And so, thank you. I got one more hand raised from Yvonne Scovron. Yvonne?
Hi, good evening. This is Yvonne Scovron, 350 North Federal Highway, apartment 1405. I actually was gonna wait till next week. If you want to carry on with the budget meeting, I can make my comments next week. It's fine.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else like to raise their hand or ask a question regarding the public, the proposed mileage and tentative annual operating budget? Saying none, public comments is closed. I don't know how I'm supposed to ask the city commission if they have comments, because I can't see you. So if you don't speak up, I'll assume that you guys don't have any comments. My one comment, I guess, would be for next year's budget is that are we including dog days at the beach as part of the Parks and Recs Fund?
You're more than happy to carry on those events. We have fun. Yes.
Okay. That's it for me. And so for proposed resolution, resolution number 20-094, Jim, is there anything you need to read into the record for these?
Just the title, Mayor. I could do that, or you can do that. Your preference.
I'll allow you to do that.
A resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting the proposed mileage rate for the city's general operating fund for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. Announcing the percentage, if any, the proposed mileage rate exceeds the rollback rate. Announcing the date, time and place of the second final public hearing on the budget and mileage rate, providing for severability conflicts and providing an effective date. And as announced in the introductory language by the finance director, the proposed mileage rate in the body of the resolution is 5.46% above the computer rollback rate, which is 7.4911. And the second budget hearing will occur on September the 22nd at 5:30 PM in the same manner that we're conducting it now virtually. And Mayor, you there in the conference room?
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Thank you. Saying no further discussions. All those in favor, sorry, state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed state so by saying nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution number 20-095. Jim?
One second, just slight freezing of the screen. Mayor, I'm gonna ask, have to ask you to read that. My connection to the city is just frozen.
All right. John, can you bring it up?
Here we go. Thank you. A resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021, providing for severability, conflict and an effective date.
They have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Saying no further discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next is conduct a public hearing to adopt the final assessment resolution for the fiscal year 2020-2021 fire assessment. Who is making the the presentation?
We don't have any extra presentation, Mayor.
So does someone want to go over? What's so?
We're not recommending any change in the rate. It's $120 for annual households. I don't have. Jim, do you have the rate schedule handy in your reso? I don't have that with me.
I have.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, there's some information in the in the agenda item that I'm bringing up on the screen. If that will be helpful.
So you're not recommending changes?
Yeah.
All right. And so now I'll open up to public comments. If someone has any comments regarding the the fire assessment.
Hi, Susan, we are 140 Southeast 27th Way. Someone else brought this to my attention recently. While it is $120 per household, there is a huge discrepancy between the fire assessment rates charged to industrial use buildings versus commercial use buildings. And I'm wondering why there's such a distinction and such a vast dollar difference. I'm not, I'm not endorsing raising industrial rates. I am for lowering commercial building rates because there is such a massive discrepancy. I was wondering if that could be explained to me and to the public in general. Thank you.
Do we have an answer? Why the industrial is charged at a different rate?
I don't have the details on the methodologies. We have our consultants that develop that, Mayor. I can certainly get that information and get that over to Susan.
And it doesn't look like we are adopting it tonight, so we will adopt it on the 22nd.
No, you are adopting it tonight.
You're adopting it tonight.
So I didn't see a resolution as part of this.
Yeah, there, Mayor, there is a resolution to be read.
Okay.
It's in the backup.
I'll bring that up.
And Jim, do we have anything in the resolution that determines why we did the institutional industrial rate at 0.06?
Mayor, not specifically, but I could tell you that the generic answer is, is that when the methodology to establish the rates was done, which we're simply carrying over again this year. There was an evaluation of both the demand for services for those two categories of use and issues regarding square footage and the caps to which fire service would be available to those types of facilities in any event. So in other words, there would be a cap, there would be no more equipment to send at a certain square footage. So the rates themselves distinguish between those two categories based upon those criteria generically. The study itself is available, and we can make that available to members of the public on request. But it's unchanged from the, from numerous years that we've carried over the same assessment rates.
Okay, so I guess Lori, you don't mind putting that as part of the budget on our website?
I'll be happy to.
Okay. So. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? I'm not seeing anyone. So may I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I need, I need to read that title for you, please.
All right.
It's resolution R20-096. A resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida relating to the provision of the fire rescue services, facilities and programs in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, imposing fire rescue assessments against assessed property located within the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020. Approving the rate of assessment, approving the assessment role, confirming and continuing a procedure for hardship waivers or deferrals of all or part of the city's fire rescue special assessment, including application and review by the city's finance director or designate, and eligibility criteria for such waivers, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Jim. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Lori, do we have Michael Rump able to speak about the the 5Gs that are antennas that are coming into the city?
I have, Colin is available. He said, I know he's, he's been handling most of the complaints that we're, that you're getting as well that we're getting, so.
Yeah, Colin Goff, Assistant City Manager. Yeah, Assistant City Manager. We have had the complaints coming in about the location of the 5G antennas. I can bring you up to date. The state preempted the city from any kind of regulation on 5G antennas. Where they're being placed mostly is on existing poles, but they have the right to put them there, and the city does not permit them, nor do we have any regulatory authority to regulate anything about those 5G antennas. That was all preempted by the state a couple of years ago, and they are regulated by the, 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 the FCF. Sorry, the Communications Agency. My mind just went blank. I'm on vacation, so my mind's a little blank. But, but they are regulated by the federal government and by the state. The city cannot regulate them. The one thing we do regulate, we can regulate is the location of new towers that they might go on. So if somebody comes in with a new tower and on that tower, they want to put a 5G antenna, the tower itself would go through our tower placement ordinances and regulations. Right now, all of the ones that I've been told about are all on existing poles, so therefore the city really doesn't have any say about them, nor can we write any regulations to regulate them. Hopefully, that will help answer the question. I wish I could give you better information, but the city was preempted from regulating those types of antennas.
So Colin, I guess my question would be is that in regards to the microwave radiation, does the city have any way to detect if it exceeds levels dictated by the federal or state government?
No, we don't. And I don't, I don't believe we were even, we would even be allowed to do, to do any kind of regulation around that to test for that. And again, it is an SEC regulation. There are offices. I do understand that several citizens have contacted them and filed complaints and asked questions. And again, it's a federal agency, but I'm sure they will respond to those if if somebody believes that the that the antennas are putting out more than they're allowed to do under, under the federal regulations. But we don't have a way to check it, and I'm not sure if that's something that staff is even qualified to do.
Okay, so it's not a community standard issue.
No, it would not be a community standard issue because it's not in our ordinances and it's not in our regulations.
All right. So Colin, do you have that information of the FCC that people can contact?
I, I don't have it directly with me. I can put it together. We've put together before, but I can find it and try to get it out there. I may talk to Eleanor and see if we want to put something on our website, or if we just want to send it to the commissioners, and then you would have it. Somebody would ask questions, and so would our staff. But we can put that together for you.
Yeah, I'd like it as part of the email newsletter so that we put it on the record for people to speak with the appropriate regulatory agencies. Thank you. So. If there's no further comments or questions, I'll move for a motion to adjourn.
Hello, I have a further question. I have some further comments about this issue.
This is Luanne?
Yes, Luanne Moore, 133 Buffett Key. Things have changed a whole lot since the state.
Luanne, I'm sorry, sorry to inform you, but now is not the, the time to speak on, on this item. We got the information regarding that the city does not have authority. If you'd like to speak to us at another time with the staff or with the city commissioners, I'd be happy to do that. But now is not the time to speak about 5G anymore. You had your opportunity of three minutes, and the city stated that there's nothing we can do, and we are going to get the information for the public to inform them, inform you of how to move forward with any complaints that you have. So. I'm sorry that we're unable to let you speak, but that's, but now is not the time for comments on 5G. Unless the commission has other thoughts. Commission is silent. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, John, do you mind providing a closing?
Yes, I will, Mayor. This concludes the city of Boynton Beach's public budget hearing meeting. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach public budget hearing meeting. We will now transition to the CRA's meeting, so please hold for approximately one minute as we get things stationed appropriately.
All right, so all in favor of adjournment, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And please do not log off. We will start at roughly 6:23 or 22.